Good evening and welcome back to the Thursday, January, excuse me, Thursday, September 6, 2018 meeting. We have just returned from our executive session and I would ask that everyone please rise when we say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I will just run through the agenda briefly. I see we have, I think, a number of people here for public comments, so then we'll go into recognitions next and then we'll go into public comment, our first opportunity. Then we will have a number of reports to the school committee and then we will go into new business, including a number of different policies, the Boston Athletic Association and the 26.2 Foundation. We will have Mr. Keller, who will talk about the middle school Herald Advisor. He will also talk about the Hopkinton Middle School two full-time employee positions. There will be a discussion on the high school hockey team overnight trip. There will be a discussion with Dr. Zaleski on the middle school paraprofessional. We will go through the policies and then we will come back. We're actually going to skip item M tonight because Ms. Barath is not here to do the meeting minutes procedure review. We will decommission Center School officially, since obviously we're not using Center School right now, and then we will go into old business for a group norms update and the superintendent's goals, and then we will have another opportunity for public comment and we will go into items by consensus. So at this time, I'm going to start with recognitions and I believe is Mrs. Dubeau coming up for that? So this is what we really miss in the summertime is with the recognitions coming and we don't do a lot of this in the summer, so this is a real treat for us.
So I am proud and pleased to recognize first grade teacher Elizabeth Farrell and our nurse, Nurse Maureen Burns. Last June, one of our snack times at Center School, Mrs. Farrell acted quickly and promptly. She noticed one of her students was choking. This was quite scary, not something that you ever planned for. She administered the Heimlich maneuver. That was successful. Nurse Burns followed up, made sure everything was as it should be, and we now have a wonderful second grader here with us today.
Do you want to say anything to them?
Okay. I'm very happy for my teacher helping me and for Mrs. Burns helping me with the choking because if they didn't save my life, I would die and that would be very sad.
So our teachers do much more than the basic academics. They truly care for your children as if they're your own, so the fact that this was done without hesitation, without missing a beat, just speaks to the level of commitment that our staff have for your children. So thank you.
Thank you.
And I just want to say Mrs. Farrell stayed calm, cool, and collected through the whole thing, which I think helps, helped him stay calm and cool and the same with Mom. So I really appreciate the fact that she also stayed very calm in addition to saving, you know, doing the Heimlich and saving him, so. I was shaking after. That's amazing.
It's great, great story, happy story.
It is a wonderful happy story. So these are some of the great things that you don't hear about and even some of our staff members, as we respect confidentiality of students and everything that happens. This was a surprise because they carried on without missing a beat for their day and that is amazing for someone who can go through, it's quite an emotional experience, and then to move on to math, handwriting, whatever it might be, after that is quite remarkable. Yes, yes. So thank you all for taking a moment to let us recognize this great staff member, nurse.
Thank you so much.
Well deserved. Yeah, there's no words for that.
And thank you for coming in. I hope Elmwood has been a great experience for you so far, too. Do you like Elmwood? Do you like Elmwood School now, too?
Yeah.
Well, we're happy you're here.
We are.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Will. So the next recognition is I wanted to, and all of us actually were there, for the Hopkinton Youth Commission sponsored a new student and new family ice cream social over at EMC, and they, Dawn Ronan is the one who thought that up with the support of the Youth Commission and reached out to the school department and it was a really, it was a great success. I think it was a great opportunity to talk with a lot of different families and so appreciative for the Youth Commission and for Dawn for coming up with the idea and look forward to collaborating with them on more things going forward, so thank you to them. And my recognition goes out to the DPW, the Hopkinton Police Department, and H-CAM. As many people are aware, we have changed the traffic patterns on Hayden Row Street. We worked with an engineering firm and I have to be very honest, I was skeptical about whether or not it would work and honestly, I think it has alleviated a lot of the traffic jamming that has happened previously on Hayden Row and we couldn't have done that without the messaging of H-CAM and the help of the Police Department and the DPW, so a shout out to them and thank you. So that brings us now to our first opportunity for public comment and I do think there are a number of people here that would like to speak, so I'm going to invite, we have a couple of chairs up here, if people want to come up a couple at a time to speak. We try to limit public comment to about three minutes each just because of the volume of public comment we get and if, I'm going to, you know, send, what I've been trying to do this year is if there's follow-up required to try to keep a list, if anyone wants to leave their email and their name, that would be helpful. So if you could just state your name and then you can.
Do I have to hold the button down?
Nope. You're all set.
Joe Skelly, 13 Stonegate Road. I'm here today to talk about some concerns regarding the after-school transportation changes that occurred this year, so I'm sure you guys are all aware of the change, right? Old process to new process. Our kids are now on the bus for roughly an hour at a time, so to me, this creates unnecessary safety issues as well as we're seeing social and emotional issues with our children over the course of the last week, just because they're seeing their friends get off the bus, since the buses do go by our home in our neighborhood, and they're unable to get off with their friends. It's just created some emotional issues over the course of last week, lots of crying. Where previously, Kidsborough was something that they really looked forward to and now they don't. So in addition to that, I think, you know, we're paying for a curriculum that we're missing out on, right, given the delays in the bus schedules. So I just wanted to voice my concern here to the school committee and make sure that we try to resolve the issue as quick as we, as quick as we can, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm from Levin Valley Wood.
I'm Pravina, 36 Huckleberry Road.
We're actually here on a different topic. We're here representing a group of parents who are very concerned about their advanced learners in the schools. We're considered the Advanced Learner Parent Advisory Council. We've been meeting with a very growing group of parents who are feeling that their needs of their students are not being met. We've shared a lot of our stories with Dr. Kavanaugh and we won't go into them now, but the biggest takeaway from that is that some of our very bright students are disengaging and they're not excited to learn and because of that, in a number of cases, they become a challenge in the classroom, behavior or any other number of reasons, other things that take place. But we would like to ask how we can be included in the strategic, three-year strategic plan that's coming up that includes groups like CPAC and LPAC and HEF and any number of them. We would like to have our place at the table as well, and so we want to ask, how can we do that?
So I'm just going to, just as a matter of policy, just, we don't actually, we can't actually answer the questions on a broader level, but I have noted what you're, and that we could maybe take an offline conversation to work around that, but just because of open meeting while we can't take up new topics.
Nope, that's fine. We just, we want to be heard and that's the big thing. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much and thank you also for coming here to bring it directly to us.
Great, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Hello, I'm Alex Harris, 3 Pond Street. I'm also here echoing some of Joe's message about transportation. I'm just trying to speak up for other parents who are working and having to sort of juggle the transportation situation. Not having gotten much of a communication in advance, we're in a state where we have to choose between having our daughter on the bus for an hour or pick her up early and take time off for work. And also, at the same time, we're trying to figure out what's coming up next. We don't know what's coming up next, if there's a solution, and in the meantime, we're paying for childcare and we're spending extra time away from work, that's being kind of a burden. What we're really looking for is a solution and sort of all sides to work together because it's really about the children and we want to make sure that we have a solution that works well for them and works well for the parents. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, and just, and I know there are others that want to speak on that as well, the school department is aware of that and is working to get back, but I do, I'm not, not cutting other people off, I just wanted to share that piece, so.
Yes, thank you.
Lisa Oliver, 5 Gibbon Road. I'm also here for the transportation. I'm not going to pile on to all of the things that they said. I agree with a lot of what is said tonight, but as you can imagine, social media and a lot of folks talking in town, this is very, obviously a very hot topic right now with a lot of the parents. My main concern is the safety of the children where they're now getting on a bus that has two different stops for them to get off, and anyone older than a kindergartner is able to get off their home bus stop without a parent there. And so my main concern is a child not knowing which bus stop to get off that day or forgetting getting off their home bus to an empty house and what, you know, what do we do at that point? So that's my main concern, along with obviously the long, you know, we're missing out on a lot of the curriculum, we are paying for after-school care, but to me, the biggest concern is just the safety of where they end up. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Kate Skelly, 13 Stonegate Road. My husband already echoed some of the concerns, but I just wanted to add also, again, my concern regarding the transportation to Kidsborough, Kidsborough, no longer having a dedicated bus that goes directly from the school to Kidsborough has caused an abundance of issues. Primarily, I think safety is the biggest one, having the children unnecessarily being on the bus for a longer period of time. Not only now where it's sweltering hot, my daughter came home the other day and was told because of the bus rules of no food and drink, that she wasn't able to have any water for that full one-hour period and she was very hot and that concerns me. And then obviously, heading into the winter months, we're not clear on a timeline in terms of whether the issue is being worked on and how long it's going to take to be resolved, so my concern obviously is, you know, heading into the winter with snow and ice and, you know, again, having the children ride these buses for longer than they really need is just not necessary. It seems as though the Hayden Row location in particular has been the location where they don't have the dedicated buses anymore and there's also confusion as to why the Marathon Kidsborough location do have these direct buses and why Hayden Row is different. There seems to be a lot of inconsistency. So I think we're just hoping today to get a better idea of how this issue is being addressed, when will it be addressed, and when will it be and how will it be communicated? A lot of us didn't even find out about this until the first day of school through bus drivers and friends and things like that, so just some clarification is needed around that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt Karris, 260 Pond Street, and I'm also here to talk about busing, so I apologize if what I say is redundant, but I do think it's important, the more people come to talk about these issues to make sure, and I know you guys are aware, but to really emphasize how big of an issue this is to the community. I came to the meetings last year where, you know, when the initial discussion was taking place about eliminating multiple bus stops and then for the second meeting when the revisions came out, which I think is kind of what came to pass today, I think we're all kind of skeptically optimistic about that revision. We still had some multiple busing allowances, but, you know, the one child being on one bus and allowing for all those, you know, additional stops and the routing issues, I think are, some of those concerns are coming to fruition. So, you know, it seems to me that, I don't know exactly what the right answer is, but, you know, I'd like to see us go back to something that's almost maybe a little bit more like the old days where there's some dedicated buses to eliminate the routing issues but still maintaining, you know, some simplicity to the schedule where there's not constant changes going, being requested. And also, we also got an email recently about some online dismissal capabilities versus sending in a note from home. Not sure at all how that might help the situation down the road, if that can be something that can kind of dovetail into this issue down, you know, long-term. But, you know, I think those are the real things that I wanted to bring out, you know, if we're limiting the amount of changes and you're limiting the amount of multiple stops but still providing some flexibility, I think there's a good happy medium that we can find that will hopefully kind of make, make things a little bit smoother and I don't want to take up too much time, but essentially that's, and there was one other thing, but now I can't remember what I was going to say, so it couldn't have been that important. But anyways, appreciate, we did, I did really appreciate when you heard what the community had to say last year, when there was talk of eliminating the multiple bus stops and it really helps people who do have to work, you know, Hopkins is a little bit of a commuter town, so with two parents working sometimes an hour away each, it's just not feasible to only have one stop, so I really would hope any solution will still kind of provide that flexibility. That's all I had to say, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, everyone. Hi. I'm Anna Heaton, 91 West Elm Street, and also here to talk about the busing situation. Our family is in a little bit of a different situation here where we've actually withdrawn both of our children from Kidsborough. After getting that bus schedule, we were actually away on vacation. I immediately contacted Leslie, seeing, you know, the schedule that had come out. I just didn't want to put him through that, so similar to the Skellies, you know, we didn't want him to be driving by our house, watching his friends get off, and we just didn't want to put him through that. He's only six. So I would just encourage you all to also think about just the transparency around publishing that bus route list. While, you know, I believe that the concept was there, I think the execution is a little bit poor and it just looks like for a lot of those routes, Kidsborough was just tacked on to the end, which we live on the Upton side of town, you know, the bus list is saying that from where we are, last stop, to Kidsborough, it's a six-minute ride and there is no way that any bus driver can make that in six minutes, and if they do, they probably shouldn't be driving a bus. So that's sort of, we find ourselves in a unique situation. We were not within that 30-day withdrawal period at Kidsborough, so now we also owe Kidsborough for the month of September. So I think, you know, everyone here has echoed a lot of what I planned on talking about, but I would like a lot more transparency and a little bit more notice, just in terms of, you know, where Kidsborough would have fallen in that, you know, bus route. Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak for public comment? Thank you all for coming out tonight and expressing your opinions to us and look forward to being in touch in the future.
Thank you.
All right, so at this time, I think we're ready to move into the superintendent's report. Okay. So I don't usually do this, but I have created some visuals to go along with my report tonight, only because I think some of the topics that we are discussing are things that, you know, you might need to be able to actually see to kind of wrap, wrap our heads around. So the welcome back is not necessarily something we need pictures of, but they are quite fun, I think, and so Jen and I did get into all of the schools in the first couple of days and despite the enormous heat, we did see kids really buckling down to teaching and learning and a lot of enthusiasm, as you can see by the Elmwood art teacher right there. So we made our way into the art room as well. Just some more pictures of the goings-on. We have a middle school classroom, Principal Vanessa Ballello watching kids file into their very, very warm cafeteria as the air conditioning is not working in that room, but some exciting pictures, too, of buses pulling up to the new Marathon Elementary School, so that was an exciting morning. All right, so my second topic is enrollment and here we are, we are one week in and our current number is 3,721 students. If we go back to some of the NESDEC reports from a while ago, 3,700 was to be reached in the year 2024, I believe. So we are way ahead of where NESDEC had once predicted we would be. What you see on that slide right there, you can see where the enrollment was in our schools at the end of 2017, 18, and those are probably the June 1 SIMS numbers. And then you can see how many students we have added during the summertime and where NESDEC thought we would be and what the difference is. So some of the line items that are really important, if you look at the kindergarten numbers, NESDEC thought we would be at about 202 students and last year, when we made our kindergarten classrooms, we thought that we would probably need about 11 classrooms and that those classrooms would be very small, and we had eliminated pairs based on that. Today, we are at 261, so we are 59 students ahead of where we thought we would be. So we have in fact added two kindergarten classrooms and we have increased the class size in kindergarten, and so earlier in the summer, we did bring back four paraprofessionals, but that does not put a pair in every single one of our classrooms. You can see grade two is up 17, grade three is up 14, grade four is up 6, grade five is up 17, and then we have grade six. This is another one of those grade levels where there are many, many more students than we anticipated. So there are 25 or maybe 26 now, I think that that number has actually even changed since this slide was created, but that's how many more sixth graders we have than we anticipated having, and so when we, you know, did some dismantling of teams last year, we are finding that we have to put teams back in place, otherwise our class sizes would be huge, and Mr. Keller will talk about that in a little bit. Grade eight, we are at 17 above and grade nine was also kind of a big influx with 12 kids joining the ninth grade. And there's almost a particular logic about why students arrive at different grade levels, so kindergarten is obviously very big because people want their kids to have the K-12 experience in Hopkinton. Middle school is another one of those places where students tend to join and then they will stay with us for the next seven years, so there's a good bubble at grade six. And then I kind of combine in my mind or in my thinking the eighth grade and ninth grade because what they're really looking for is that high school experience, so whether you join in grade eight or grade nine, people are here for the high school experience in Hopkinton. So if we looked at grade eight and grade nine, together, we're at 29 students there. Long story short, if we look at the enrollment at the end of 2017, 18, we were at 3,584. So we were above where NESDEC predicted we would be at that time. And when we take a look at where we are now at 3,721, so NESDEC would have thought we should be at 3,532. We exceeded that last January. So we could have accounted really for about 50 of those students, but now with 189, we're really about 139 kids better, and even if we thought to ourselves more kids will join us in the summer, there's still sort of a rationale there that says we could never have predicted for those additional 100 students, not with the NESDEC planning. And I don't blame NESDEC for it, it just sort of is what it is. It's a service that they provide to us. But if we think about our per pupil expenditure, and the link to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is in here, currently, our per pupil expenditure is at $14,557.98. If we looked at the 189 students who joined us, that would be a $2 million cost. If we based it only on 100, because we had a good sense that we would probably have those 89 students, we're still talking a million and a half dollars from where we anticipated that we would be. So budgetarily, we are doing, I think, everything that we can in our power, given the dollar amount and the resources and the personnel that we currently have in our schools. But I think going forward and going into this budget season, we are going to have to think very hard about the influx of students and why Hopkinton is so desirable, but I think we also need to consider all of the developments that are happening in our community, who lives in those developments, are they school-aged children? What kinds of needs and wants and desires do those families have and what kinds of demands would they like to see from our schools, because that's really important. But even more important than that are issues like busing. So busing is expensive and the more students we bring to the district, the more buses we need in the district. Special education costs, the more special education students we bring to the district, the more special education costs we're going to be seeing. So those are some of those bigger picture items and maybe the biggest of them all is physical plants. At some point, we just don't have enough classrooms to accommodate the numbers of students who want to move into Hopkinton, and it's a lovely problem to have. We love to have families who want to be a part of our Hopkinton public schools, but at some point, we have to think also about growth in the town in terms of buildings. So we are, I think, on the cusp of something that we have to take very seriously as we look at the next budget season. I had contacted Amber Bach, who is over in West Row, and one of the things that they did when they saw this, when they saw this sort of explosion of growth, was to hire a firm. They put out an RFP not only to look at sort of students, demographics, numbers, enrollment, but also to talk about the big dollar factor impacts on their community, and that's something that I think, you know, we may want to think about because it's more than what NESDEC does. All right, so we do have a budget process timeline. This is what I received from the Town Hall. This is only a draft at this point, and as Nancy had said to me the other day when this was first released, one thing that we probably need to think about is the January 1 deadline for school budget. We might need to just push that out a couple of days because that feels somewhat early and there's that whole transparency piece that if you try to squeeze this in before the winter holidays, it typically is difficult to do. We have the capital process outlined and that came from Town Hall as well, so I think that we're in good shape in terms of getting something together for entering into budget And I know that I had mentioned this in my recognitions, but I did want to say thank you to parents and to students as well as the DPW, the Police Department, the crossing guards and H-CAM. What's happening at the high school in the morning feels a whole lot safer, traffic is moving on Hayden Row, and we could not do it without the help of crossing guards, SROs, the Police Department, H-CAM. It's been a wonderful partnership in the community. All right, and then the last thing that I think I have is just a little bit of an update on the diversity survey that we had put out in the summertime. One of the concerns that we had was will we get enough respondents for it sort of, you know, to make some kind of a difference? So the numbers of respondents, we have 97 teachers who responded, 131 students, and we only looked at students in grades 8 to 12. We put the survey out to alumni and we had 37 respondents and we had 440 parents answered the survey. So I'll show you a little bit of the quantitative data that we got, but also a little bit of the qualitative data. If you look at some of the demographics of the alumni respondents, three of those students identified as black, one is Latino, two is Pakistani, one is Asian, two defined themselves as either poor or lower-middle-class, five bisexual and four gay. So looking at those numbers and if you think about those numbers out of 37, they certainly do not represent the demography of the kids who inhabited our schools in perhaps 2015, 2016, 2017. So my interpretation of that is that the kids who belong to groups that are traditionally marginalized were kids who spoke out quite a bit. And what I have done is just included five of the quotes that they gave to us. The first one is I didn't feel The first one is, "I didn't feel comfortable coming out until the middle of high school and it was definitely due in part to homophobic comments heard throughout elementary and middle school. I was made fun of for my hair, my weight, the fact that I had hand-me-down clothes or how I couldn't afford to have the newest flat-screen TV. Every day for years, I was made fun of for the color of my skin and how I looked. I wish I felt more supported as a student, even when I wasn't on top, wasn't the top of my class and playing sports. And obviously, every little detail of every day isn't pitiful, but beware of the belief that the white athletic-bodied girl with money is the best girl in this town." So they are clearly expressing their marginalization and I think that that's something that's really important to us going forward. One thing that I believe about a good survey is that it doesn't provide us with answers, but it provides us with more questions. And so if our plan is to start up focus groups and have people in the community really explore some of these topics, and I'm happy to sort of cull the data for themes, but then have people start to take a look at these themes and how we can better address them. But clearly, we are hearing some voices and it would be a small faction of students, but I believe that if anyone had those feelings, it's worth our, the school department's exploration of the issues. I have also included some of the parent voices. And while there are many, many different aspects of this that, you know, emotions, feelings, ideas, thoughts, remarks that parents had expressed to us, one that came out very loudly and clearly to me is that there are some parents who would prefer that the Hopkinton Public Schools not even focus on this issue of diversity and social emotional concerns very heavily. They had, they believed that there were other things that were much more important. So the first parent at the top says that kids are kids and toughen up snowflakes. So there's that sort of belief that this is just the way life is. There's a second one, little too much focus on equality and not enough pushing harder academics. Values are taught at home, in church, et cetera. Schools should be focused on academics. So there's a couple that have that sort of same mindset. While this is a topic of discussion today, I hope that the Hopkinton Public Schools continues to focus on academics, math, English, grammar, science, history as the most important topic to put first for our children. I would not like to see the school go overboard with programs related to this topic. And then the last one, from early elementary on, staff of Hopkinton Public Schools strive to meet the needs of a constantly evolving student population. From empathy training to anti-bullying, students know that the school culture does not condone racism, classism, homophobia, transphobia, gender discrimination, or the bullying of children with any class of special needs. So you can see that the last one is just someone who thinks that we're probably already doing a very good job, right? So there's, you know, that sort of mindset and for different reasons that things are, that maybe we don't really need to pursue this and that's something to consider as well. And as I said, there are loads more sort of parent voices out there and I think I just sort of chose these to illustrate that qualitative piece and the themes that emerge. These are the more quantitative ones. This is the statement that I believe the Hopkinton Public Schools addresses the social emotional needs of all learners. The teachers responded in agreement or a strong agreement at a rate of 81.4%. So the teachers, about 80% of them think that we're doing a pretty darn good job. But when we looked at the student responses, they were only in agreement at, or a strong agreement at a rate of 68.7%. So maybe the kids know something that the teachers don't know. And as we looked at some of the more qualitative data on the part of the kids, the kids very often would say that, you know, there's sort of an undercurrent, that it's not that sort of palpable tangible thing that happens. And so that might be another area for us to explore. But this is just the kind of meaning-making that I think we need to do with this data and there's obviously lots more of that to be done. And then finally, this one was interesting to me because the teachers and the students responded almost at the exact same rate. So the statement is, "I have witnessed or experienced a lack of sensitivity from administrators, teachers and/or staff." And the teachers responded at 69.8 and the students responded at 66.7. So what's interesting to me on that one is that if teachers and kids are both saying that they have witnessed or experienced that lack of sensitivity, what is the cause of the lack of sensitivity, right? I mean, if they're telling us that that's happening, is it because our teachers just haven't had enough training to know that some of the things that, or our administrators or, you know, anyone is saying it's just because they haven't had enough training in that area? It's hard to know. So this one, I think, is something that is really worth pursuing. And as you know, we're doing the work with the ADL, so they've been in to do some of the PD with the middle school and high school. And we, the administrative team has also been working with Calis Warham to take a look at some of those things. So there's certainly more to come on that issue. But the last piece is, the focus groups are coming soon, so get ready because we'll be looking for you, for your input on that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And by the way, I really like the visual.
Oh, thank you for that. It's helpful.
So I'm going to suggest that we take some things out of order because we do have some guests speaking and move the school committee chair report as well as the liaison report to the end of the meeting. So that I don't skip over that at the end.
Okay.
You're going to kick me under the table if I go on. And then we can invite Mr. Kilduff up because he would be next for the Boston Athletic Association and 26.2 Foundation. I also want to say I always enjoy when Mr. Kilduff comes to our meetings.
What does he do?
See, he always brings stuff. Thank you. Okay, and these are like hot commodities. These are good pens.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to switch pens right now.
I am. This is the best pen you'll own, I tell you. You're going to lose it.
If you just take one second and read the little inscription, it really speaks to this little presentation I'd like to make. There really is more to the marathon than running 26.2 miles. Principal Keller will agree with that. There's a lot of work that's being done in the schools that uses the marathon as a platform. And you're all familiar with what happens at Elmwood. That just begins to scratch the surface. But we're in the second round, I guess you could call it a round, of an agreement between the Hopkinton Schools, the Boston Athletic Association and the 26.2 Foundation. And would be happy at some point, I'm not going to take up your time tonight unless you want to really drill down, but I think probably what we should do, Carol, is to prepare a report that you could circulate relative to the history of both this project and the work that we're doing in the schools. Might be an easy way to do that. But in simple form, there is an agreement that exists between those three parties that, in which the BAA has agreed to deliver to the schools $25,000 a year for 10 years. The 26.2 Foundation has agreed to a $10,000 contribution over a 10-year period. I think this is the third year maybe of this agreement, second or third? Third, I think. To give you a quick example, the first round, 10 years ago, paid for the bleachers on the football field. Before that, when we ran the, when we put in the first track, the foundation raised money and we were able to contribute the unreimbursable portion of the cost of the track. And there are other things. Like the last two years, we've been able to, with the support of the administrative team, funnel some funds and we developed the cross-country track that the middle school uses. There's a second phase to that and we'll be, we're going to be meeting with the superintendent because the ultimate goal is to create a course that is tough, that's a real course, it's a real cross-country course, not all on roads, but in back of the schools. If you haven't been to a middle school cross-country meet, it really is pretty emotional because the other teams literally will stop when the middle school cross-country girls and boys teams run their race. It's really, it's really, it's heartwarming, I guess is the way to put it. We want to move into a second phase. That's just scratching the surface. There are other programs that we're involved in. We have funded, I think it is now, six middle school teachers that have gone through an immersion around the Greek classics, which includes a very serious course of study. They do get to go to Greece for a week at the end of that. And sort of another example of using, and as you may know, experts on curriculum, I'm sure, every school child in Massachusetts, either in sixth or seventh grade, has a section of their curriculum focused on Greece. That's the method to the madness. So because of what we're doing in the schools, we're starting to connect that and it's really terrific. So I have a check for $10,000 for really, I guess it's, no, it's this year, it's the same year, from last year's marathon, that we'd like to deliver. And I appreciate, I really do appreciate the opportunity to take a few minutes. Too often, these get shoved in an envelope and sent through the mail and it's a missed opportunity. But I could go on and on and on, but I saw those figures that are staggering. Good luck. Let us know how we can help communicate that stuff. Those are staggering, staggering figures. And if this helps a little bit, so it doesn't get piled on the school budget, we think that's a good thing. And we're going to continue to do that and we're going to continue to strengthen our relationship with not just your administrative team, but the students as well. So I appreciate the opportunity to take a couple of minutes.
Thank you very much. I would echo watching those middle school cross-country runners by, have the opportunity to run right on the school property is a really fantastic thing to watch and it's neat for them. And I so appreciate all that you have done on behalf of the 26.2 and the marathon.
Happy to do it.
And we enjoy your coming and thank you for the time.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you, sir.
You can deposit it tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good night. So I don't want to skip over B because I'm afraid I'll forget it if we don't. But the next item is to vote to ratify the MOU with the HTA paraprofessionals that we discussed in executive session. And for consideration, it's a request and recommendation of the superintendent that the school committee vote to ratify the MOU with the HTA paraprofessionals. That really stole your line, sorry.
That's all right. So moved.
I'll second.
That's great. And all those in favor?
Yes.
Yes, and it is unanimous and so carries. And that brings us up to item C, which is the middle school herald advisor. And we would like to hear from you, Mr. Keller.
Good evening. So earlier in the summer, I spoke to you about a couple of clubs that we were looking to move and one club that I forgot to ask about at that time is the middle school herald. So we have a writing club, actually, that was started, it's actually, last year was its second year and so it had proven itself and they produced some great materials that they put out on a monthly basis that is distributed on paper. We tried electronic before, but we feel like there's something about something being on paper that really kind of catches people's eyes and attention. So we would like to have that be an official Hopkinton Middle School Club. We are no longer endorsing the club live. We had a teacher that started that several years ago who's no longer at the middle school and we've been kind of cobbling it together for the past couple of years with a few people pitching in and ultimately, we just felt like last year, we weren't able to really fully support it. So that's the funds we would like to be used to direct to the HMS Herald.
So just to, it has no budget impact for us because it's just moving from one bucket to another in there. Do you have questions?
Subscribe to get a copy of the...
I would happily have copies of...
Subscription fee?
There are no, currently no subscription fees, although we should look into that. At present, it is free. It's on a monthly basis.
Monthly basis, all right. Perfect.
How many students contribute to it?
So last year, it actually, it actually was the brainchild of two students and they started, I think the first issue was basically those two students and the teacher. I think the staff is now up to about seven students. So very committed, very diehard students that get really excited. They also deliver. They are writers and they're the delivery people for the paper as well, so, yeah, that's exciting.
Learning the business end.
Yeah, exactly.
So then I guess I would seek a motion to approve the HMS Herald advisor stipend for 2018 to 2019.
So moved.
Motion by Meg.
Second.
Second by Amanda. All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes, and so moves. And then we have you, here we put you back to back. I didn't know if you wanted to introduce that at all, I don't want to steal your line, has your name there.
So I will ask you to talk a little bit to your request for two FTE positions at the middle school.
Right, so speaking of budget impact, so, you know, Dr. Kavanaugh spoke earlier about enrollment and as you know, Mrs. Ben Bennet came when I was unable to be here on August 10th to talk to you about enrollment in grade eight. So at that time, we had 311 students in grade eight, 12 sections of academics were exceeding 25 students in the class and our related arts class size averages were 29 at that time. So we were able to think creatively at that time and flexibly and move a teacher who was scheduled to teach a literacy class into academics and then ultimately asked you, asked you, excuse me, if we could hire a teacher. So those two teachers then, one that was new for, added to the budget and then one that was internal, essentially joined a seventh grade team, which allowed us to have three teams in eighth grade, which brought class sizes down to reasonable levels in both academics and related arts. So then on August 30th, we look back at the numbers and, you know, hopefully you have the document, had an opportunity to look, take a look at the document. Grade six as of August 30th was at 307 students and we had two new students actually join us on that date. And so, so grade six is different than grade eight. Grades seven and eight have five teachers per team and one thing that's, I feel like is always important, and I apologize if you already know this, but at the middle school level, we're on teams and teams are an important part of what we do. And I believe it ultimately is at the core of what makes middle schools unique and special and able to meet the needs of that, what can be a difficult period for all of us, I suppose. And so, so grade seven, eight does not have, excuse me, does have foreign language, so we essentially have five teachers on each team. In grade six, we do not have foreign language, so there's just the four core subjects, English, math, science and social studies. So when we look at 307 students, we're dividing them amongst 12 teachers, because there's essentially 12 places for those students to go. One of our teams in grade six is, has some specific training in language-based strategies, so students who have language-based needs are placed on that team. So that team tends to have a slightly smaller caseload and on the document in front of you, you'll see that overall, that's team one and they have 97 students on that team. Team two has 104 students and team three has 106 students. So right now, with a total of 307 students, we are, we have, on team two, 14 of the 16 sections are over 25 students, are at or above 25 students. And on team three, 16 of the 16 sections are at or above 25 students. And then as you can see, we have in team three, class size averages of 27 and on team two, 26 is the class size average. So it's very tight in the classroom. I don't believe, if history is a guide, I don't believe that we're done adding students and so, you know, and just looking at how things are going in that first week and talking to teachers and being in the classrooms, I don't feel like it's the best learning environment for that number of students. And so I'm here ultimately requesting, although difficult in terms of thinking about the impact on paying for teachers as well as thinking about the logistics of moving kids and teachers, I do feel as though what I need to do as principal is to ask for additional staffing in order to address those high class sizes. So my request at this time is to add two teachers to grade six who would essentially join one of the grade six teams. And so we would create basically a mega team. We would have two teams that would still have four teachers each and then the third team would have six teachers each. And then, and that would bring class sizes down on teams one and two, class size averages would be at 21. And on that third mega team, it would bring class size averages down to 23 and we would have no sections at or above 25 students. So that's my request and there is a typo, so if below that grid on page two, I talked about teaching assignments on team three and I'll just review that just to make sure that I clarify the typo. So what I'm suggesting then is that the teaching assignments would be, the English teacher on that team would have four English classes, the math teacher... would be at 21, and on that third mega-team, it would bring class size averages down to 23, and we would have no sections at or above 25 students. So that's my request, and there is a typo, so if below that grid on page two, I talked about teaching assignments on Team Three, and I'll just review that, just to make sure that I clarify the typo. So what I'm suggesting then is that the teaching assignments would be, the English teacher on that team would have four English classes, the math teacher would have four math classes, a social studies teacher would teach four social studies classes, we would then have a dual-licensed math and science teacher who would teach two math classes and two science classes, a dual-licensed English and social studies teacher, or there's also a different licenser called humanities, and that person, whatever he or she has, would be two English sci, two English classes and two social studies classes, and the typo, which is, I guess, more of a missing piece of information, as opposed to a typo is, I forgot to put science in there, so there would be a science teacher teaching four science classes. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Did I?
One, two, three, four.
Yes, that's what I forgot, yes, the science teacher. Thank you.
So I can jump in, Elizabeth. So this is a tough situation for, I think, no matter what angle you look at it, it's a tough situation.
Absolutely.
To have too many kids in the classroom, and you think about how difficult that puts the year out. The other concern I have, though, is that there isn't, it doesn't seem like there's a perfect solution, because my concern is, and I guess what I'm asking is how this could be handled the most delicate possible way, is kids who are already on, obviously in their schedules, that they're on the team they're already on, with the teachers they have, and the friends they have, I'm going to guess, if we approve this tonight, you're not going to have the person in place tomorrow.
Right.
My guess would be probably October at some point, is that...
Yeah, so I mean, we've talked about, if approved, what would be the ideal timeline. So in my head, it's a mid-October, probably is realistic. I mean, usually, when hiring, I like to keep a position open for at least two weeks, because I feel like that's the ideal window. Grade six goes in nature's classroom, October 22nd, so, you know, if all works out, the thought would be that maybe this would happen either right before, or ideally, I think, kind of right after nature's classroom, because that's kind of a little bit of a, that's a four-day break, it's an opportunity for, if hired, and those teachers could come along and get to know some of the kids, and interact with them, and, but yeah, that's definitely, obviously, this is not ideal for anybody.
Are there any ways to self-select, or I don't know that, generally, I have no concept of how this would be for some students. Some students might be thrilled, and their families might be thrilled, that they might not be in, you know, where they wanted to be most, or whatnot, and might welcome the change. Other students might feel really settled, they might have been placed with kids they feel safe with, or teachers that felt like a really good match, for whatever reason, and being told that they have to switch in October might be difficult. What would be, how would you select who would move, and would there be a chance for parents to opt out of having their child moved?
So I think, I mean, so the way we do scheduling in grade six, you know, right, we do it in pods, and so students are assigned to pods of six to eight students. And so that pod, you know, years ago, we used to have, you know, if you were in a class of 23, you'd start your day in English, and all 23 kids would then go to math, and all 23 would go to social studies. So we stopped doing that, I think, three years ago, feeling as though it gives us a little more flexibility, and the pod system still allows students to travel with some kids that they know, but also be exposed to other kids, and not be with the same 23 or so kids. So the initial thought would be that we would look at pods, that we could move, and so I worry a little bit about, like, self-selecting, even though, like, that would feel good...
Not saying it's a great solution, I'm just trying to figure out how...
No, it's definitely something we talked about. I mean, we talked about a variety of things. Again, this is all, I don't want you to think that we were being presumptive in any way, but it was all kind of like, if this is approved, what are our first steps, and where do we go from there? But I do think that self-selecting, unfortunately, would kind of open things up that, because I think that our pod system is important to us, and so I would want to try and preserve those. But I certainly, if somebody felt very strongly about, I don't want my child to move off this team, I would feel strongly about honoring that request.
So the one other question I have, I think, that I can think of, is, so the, with the two duly-certified teachers, so would the kids that have, have the one duly-certified teacher not necessarily going to be just contained to those two duly-certified teachers? Will they circulate throughout the rest of that team as well, or is that sort of a mini-team within a team?
No, that would not be a mini-team within a team. So, you know, a student might have teacher one for math, but then go to the dual-licensed teacher for science, and that, and as much as possible, so we, you know, we did this, I believe it's the class that's currently sophomores, I believe that's the very large class. We brought in a team in grade six of two teachers, and they were a mini-team in grade six, mini-team in grade seven, and then we actually absorbed them into a larger team in grade eight. And ultimately, that was one of those kind of learning lessons, in that the mini-team was kind of nice, but also what we learned was that it was somewhat isolating for those kids, and that's why, why I'm now moving more toward this kind of mega-team model, for the kids to be able to experience more teachers, to have that true middle school opportunity, and to be exposed to more kids. So I would, as much as possible, we would try and have that student, all students have four teachers, as opposed to having the same teacher for math and the same teacher for science.
That answers that. The other thing that did, I did actually have a question that you triggered, so looking at the current 10th grade, which was four years ago, they were sixth graders, at that time, were there this comparable number of teachers, because that classes must have been over 300 as well?
Yeah, so when they, I believe they were 308 when they came into the middle school, and, and so it was, so we had the three teams of four, and then we brought on a mini-team of two at that time.
So this is comparable in number of teachers that you had at the same time?
Yes.
Other people, I don't mean to monopolize.
No, it's all right. I actually emailed almost the exact questions that Nancy said I emailed them to Carol, because I feel like that's what parents are going to be concerned about, so I mean, you know, you're in a tough spot. But the other two things that I just wanted to confirm is, so these teachers are going to come in at sixth grade, then are they going to loop with the kids up to seventh grade, because you're going to have a teacher deficit in seventh grade in the next year?
So that would be the thought, yes. So right now, in grade seven, we have a mega-team, we have one team of five teachers, and then we have another one of these mega-teams of seven teachers. And so the thinking, of course, this all would be budget-dependent for next year, but the thinking would be that these teachers in grade six would then form a third team in grade seven, join the two that are already up there, and form a third team.
Okay.
So it wouldn't be limited to just a one-year position that you're hiring for?
Correct.
Yeah. And then, the only other question, which is, I mean, it is what it is, but how are you doing for space for all these classrooms?
So there's definitely going to be, have to be some classroom sharing, and again, not to be presumptive, but we've started looking at everything and laying everything out, and so that's not going to be ideal, because teachers have their classrooms set up, and so we're going to have to ask for some teachers to move, and we're going to have to move some different classrooms around, and, you know, when, the high school does a lot of classroom sharing, and they're used to it, but at the middle school and elementary levels, I know that it's like, this is my classroom space, and so it's going to have to be a little bit of a shift in mindset, but it's tight, there's no question.
Because of the increased number of students in the classroom right now, have the teachers been able to modify their practices to accommodate a greater number of students?
I mean, so there's definitely been, I mean, A, it's early, I mean, a lot of what we've done to this point has been kind of introductory, and really, we've just, I mean, I would say, you know, Tuesday, and even a little bit on Wednesday, I should say Wednesday, and a little bit on Tuesday, started kind of digging into the curriculum. So there's definitely been, you know, my conversations with teachers today, at the end of last week, is how they are certainly struggling, and kind of just being able to do some flexible grouping in the classroom that they traditionally would do, just because there's not the space in there, but that has posed a big challenge.
Okay.
Did we ask it all?
Excellent question.
Yeah, all right.
I have a question that I had asked, and I don't know if you want to speak to this at all, on top of what you've already said, is how we will pay for this, and how it fits in our budget. If you want to talk to that at all.
Sure. So because we had been able to prepay accept transportation in the amount of $327,000, we are looking at that currently as the funding source for these two FTEs that have been added. We have done a little bit of work trying to think about how we will be funding the pair that Dr. Zaleski is seeking, the four pairs that we've already added to the Marathon Elementary School, and I think at this point, we're still stable. I'll let you speak to that, really, I mean, you should be answering the question, but...
Yeah, I mean, you know, so we look to our salary reserve, which also, you have hiring changes, you know, where we'd have somebody who may have left, who was at the top of the scale, and principals are very good at reviewing candidates, and trying to bring them in lower on the scale. So you'll have some hiring gains, so there's lots of different things that'll play out. You have, within salaries reserve, teachers intent to move a lane, and that will come, you know, the deadline is in October, and if they don't actually attain that lane, so we budgeted for that attainment, but they may not actually get there. So, you know, more and more of it will play out as we get further into the fall, but we do have salary reserve, we do have that prepayment as well.
So we're still, we're still good.
Good as we can be.
It's September 6th.
So I, I, we're good for now. So I, this has been difficult, I know, in all the buildings, and I commend you and all of our principals at being able to think adaptively, at trying to find solutions to some of these much, much larger enrollments than we anticipated, and I would be in support and seek a motion to, I want to get the wording exactly right, to, a motion to approve the addition of two full-time employee teachers at the Hopkinton Middle School, would be the motion I would seek.
So moved.
Second.
Second, and all those in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
And it so carries, and thank you for bringing us forward and being patient with all the questions.
Oh, please, no, thank you so much for considering that.
And good luck.
Good luck, and may the move-ins that come between now and the end of the year not be so heavy on the sixth grade.
Yeah, thank you.
Or the eighth grade, perhaps.
I appreciate it, and I apologize for having to comment after this.
Oh, no.
If we could have predicted that all these kids would move in over the summer, we'd be in a different position, but this has never happened, as you know. You've been, you've been the middle school principal how many years now?
This is nine.
This has got to be one of the more challenging summers for you.
Yeah, no question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, good luck.
Seriously.
So do we want to come back to the hockey and jump to Dr. Zaleski?
Sure.
As interesting as we are, you may not want to stay all night.
Riveting, but...
Good evening. Hello.
It should be, it should be on.
Good evening. There we are. Thank you for having me tonight. I am here to request a para-professional for the middle school. So as previously stated, we've had a lot of folks move in, and this particular summer, we've had four unanticipated student move-ins with pretty significant needs. And so what I did was, I met with Dan Mazur, our team chair, as well as Mr. Keller, and we analyzed our current existing staffing, and we also looked at IEP service delivery grids. And one of the things I do, just to let you folks know, is when we have student move-ins, I analyze across the district, because things change, someone might move out, someone might not need a particular service. But after analyzing all that over the summer, I became very aware, as we got to learn a little bit more about the students, because we don't always have all their information right away either, so we need time to analyze their IEP service delivery grids, recognized that we definitely had a gap and a need. So with the four students, what we did was, we looked at all of our current para-professionals at the middle school, knowing that district-wide, I couldn't touch any of the supports, and we scheduled students according to their, what we know about them, again, we don't know them well, but what we know about them strategically, so that they were well-supported. But it left us a gap with one particular student, who we're currently, right now, covering with a substitute, which is less than ideal, which is why I asked to be on the agenda tonight, because I don't want to waste any more time with service delivery. So I am asking for a para-professional for that purpose, so we can immediately give this child what he needs. And the way that we do it, just to give you folks a little bit of a background, is when we hire para-professionals, particularly at the secondary level, we try to avoid, whenever possible, I mean, unless it's a safety concern, a lot of one-to-one support. And we do have some one-to-one support at the middle school, however, what we do is, when we hire a para-professional, we have them work with multiple different children across the grade spans, so that way the students become familiar with the, with these supports, and don't become overly dependent or reliant on one particular adult. So as we're preparing them for secondary and post-secondary environments, and to foster independence, which really is in alignment with the DSC regulation, to foster student independence, particularly in the upper-grade levels, I guess what I'm trying to say is, we're going to make the best use of this para-professional, not to be attached as a one-to-one, unless we, as we get to know the student, that need will exist. So I feel like we'll get a lot out of this hire, and I hope that you'll approve it, because we do need to support the student. As far as funding, Ms. Rothermack gave a nice summary. I did analyze my budget, and we do have some funding left over from the FY18, 240 grant in salaries, which is going to assist with this, as well as ESY salary, we have some leftover ESY salaries as well. So I can comfortably fund it, and I say comfortably with great reservation, right now, if nobody else moves in, I'm good. But, but, but in all seriousness, I think that, you know, it's not going to affect us in terms of the overall operating budget, to put this position in place, and we can fund it appropriately. And then we just need to post and find somebody right away. So if you know anybody out there, let me know.
Thank you. Obviously, it's important to support all of our students' needs, and I can see why using a substitute teacher would not be adequate for a student who needs help. So I don't know if anybody has any questions beyond that, otherwise, I would seek a motion to approve the addition of an additional special education para-professional for the Hopkinton Middle School.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for taking time out of your nights, and that's good. Do you want to go back now to the high school hockey overnight trip?
Sure.
So my fear is, we're going to forget things if we go too far down with them.
Agreed.
I will, anyway.
I'm starting to check things off over here.
I appreciate that. You're going to kick me when I forget stuff.
It's fine.
So I'm actually presenting this for our athletic director, Dee King, I think this was the one evening this week that she had off, and I had said to her, please don't come, we can handle this. So what we are looking for is your approval for an overnight field trip. The Hopkinton High School hockey team, I believe, has done this field trip in the past, they go to the Fairleigh Dickinson tourney, and it is on Martha's Vineyard. So you can take a look at the itinerary that has been offered to you. They will go down on February 16th, they have a game at 5:00, and then a game at 7:00, and then they stay overnight in a hotel, and then on the next morning at 11:00, they have the consolation game and/or the championship game at 1:00, depending upon how they fare, and they return back to Hopkinton on the 17th, somewhere around 3:30, 4:00-ish, so.
Okay. Any questions?
Sounds like a great trip, and that's vacation, too, they don't miss any school, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, then, without any questions, I would seek a motion to approve the high school hockey team overnight trip for February 16th and 17th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
And all those in favor?
Yes.
Yes, as well, and that so moves, and we are, that brings us up to some policy, and I just want to note, before we go through each individual policy, that these policies did go out by listserv to the district, and we did not receive any communication on any of them.
Okay. Not to be out of order, but do you want to go back and do B before we go to policy? Which is the MOU, do we not do that?
We did, no, we did do that.
We did do it?
We did do the MOU.
I just didn't check it out.
That's okay.
Sorry.
I think it's only the school committee chair report that we're going back to.
Okay. All right, let's check now.
I panicked for a minute.
Sorry. Sorry to freak you out.
So you are the, up first with school committee BHC, school committee staff communications.
Okay, so, BHC, so Amanda did an amazing job perusing every single one of MASC's policies, and sort of cross-referencing those that we do use and those that we don't use, and we do not, she noted, and rightly so, that we do not have a school committee staff communications policy. So the discussion in our subcommittee over the last several meetings, we believe that establishing some clear channels of communication via this policy will kind of help to solidify how we work collectively as a committee. So we have a draft of the policy that is cut and pasted essentially, not even essentially, it is cut and pasted from the MASC website, and, you know, for your review. And really, basically, it just states that when we communicate to any member of the staff, we need... staff, we need to do so through the superintendent, and that it's not appropriate for us to contact a staff member directly. If they choose to contact us directly, that's a different story, but we should, we need to go through the superintendent.
Which is, from what I gather, a standard throughout the state.
It also reflected in our norms, which we're going to cover later in the meeting, so.
Okay. And was, any comment received from your end on this policy?
No, none.
If anybody has anything to add.
It's pretty cut and dry.
It seems pretty cut and dry. I guess I would be comfortable if nobody has any questions or concerns or things they want to redline and think about that we could go ahead and approve it.
Okay. Yeah, absolutely. Are you good?
Yeah.
Amanda and I have read it like fifteen times at least, so yeah.
I really appreciate how thorough your work has been on policy, both of you, so thank you for that. All right, then. I guess I would seek a motion to approve the new policy, BHC, as included in our agenda materials.
So moved.
Second.
Fantastic.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. It's passes, passes for nothing, so that moves us into the next one, which is policy AC, nondiscrimination policy, with you, Dr. Kavanaugh.
Okay. So you see that you have policy AC in front of you. In July of 2018, the Mass Association of School Committees recommended that you simply add language to all of those protected classes. And so currently, the one that they tell us is missing is pregnancy or pregnancy-related condition. And so when we took a look at this, we noted that there were a couple of places where you kind of go through that whole list, and so we have made them, I guess, somewhat symmetrical in this policy, as well as another further on down the line. So, race, color, sex, age, ancestry, athletic performance, physical handicap, academic performance, gender, identity, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, pregnancy or pregnancy-related condition is the additional one, disability or proficiency in the English language. So essentially, that is the only change. The one thing that I looked at with this policy is on the second side of that sheet where there is a procedural reference, AC-E1, I'm not sure that we have that procedural reference actually in our policy. So I think that we will need to take that out of there.
That is a question.
Probably take a look at that. We do have ACE, A-C-E-R, but I don't think that we have an AC-E1.
Not on our website.
Right, so we probably just need to make sure that we remove that cross-reference as well.
Good catch.
I don't know how it happened.
Sometimes these things come together, it's good. All right.
So this, this one, as I'm understanding it, is really just cleaning up.
Language.
Language. And I, so without any comment from anybody, unless anybody here has any comments, I think it's okay to go ahead and approve this.
You're good.
Okay, then I would seek a motion to approve policy AC as outlined in our agenda materials.
So moved.
Second.
In favor?
Yes.
Aye, and it so carries. So that brings us, I'll just scroll back to my agenda here, to the next policy is, again, Dr. Kavanaugh with DK slash DGA, payment procedures and authorized signatures. Okay.
Brilliant acronyms.
Right.
Yes.
It's to see how much we can twist my tongue when I'm trying to say that aloud.
So currently, our DK slash DGA combines two different policies. And the other issue that we have with this policy is it does not reflect our current practice in terms of signing the warrant and how our bills get paid. And so as a subcommittee, when we got together, we did look to see what MASC had, and MASC divides those two policies into DK, payment procedures, and DGA, authorized signatures. And so what I have done is just made a copy of those, so that we can all take a look at them. And this is, I think, MASC's language verbatim.
As a policy subcommittee, we were recommending that this committee look to adopt, to split
that, those two policies into DK and DGA, and then adopt MASC's language.
So in practice, if I could just ask a quick question, in practice, what this would change is we will go to, we'll do the bills here collectively to look at, is that?
I think what it does is it, it changes, our existing policy requires three signatures of the school committee. And this eliminates three signatures. Unless we're a regional school district, we are not required to have three. We can have one, which is what we are doing in practice, but our policy doesn't reflect that. So it's, it's basically cleaning that up, and I don't think our procedure that you're doing right now would change. And the entire school committee is still required to vote at the meeting on the payments, on the warrants.
Gotcha. And so that will still remain part of the items by consensus, is that, yes?
Yes.
What we're hoping is that this will reflect better the practice we currently have in place.
Yes, that absolutely makes sense to me. I don't think there would be any objection to it, but I do feel a little differently about voting on this one specifically, and I don't want to overstep the policy, just because what went out in listserv is different from what we're approving. I don't have a huge stake on whether or not we change. Am I right, just, the new, did the new one go out by listserv, or did the old one go out by listserv?
The old one went out.
Old one, yep.
So if you wanted to bring it back for a second reading, and just have these in the packet, is that what you want?
And just have these in the packet like that, I think that would be. I don't see any reason why it would be held up, but I feel like it provides transparency for the public, if they want to know before we do it.
Push it to the 20th, or medium.
Push it out on the 20th.
At least we only might have two that day, right?
I thought, I saw a posting, you guys are.
We are all business right now.
You guys are all business, it seems like we're going to have just a wave of policy.
We're on fire, I mean, watch out, it's insane.
I should move over a little bit.
Yeah, you probably might want to.
Okay, so we will, we will not make a motion on that tonight, we will move on to another one with you, Dr. Kavanaugh, school committee policy, JFABE, education opportunities for military children.
Okay, and these are two that we currently do not have, but these have come to us because of ESSA, the Every Student Succeed Act, and MASC has suggested that we adopt these for children who are in foster care and for children, opportunities for children of people in the military. So the first one is JFABF, nope, I fibbed, JFABE, sorry, I got them stapled incorrectly. And that is the educational opportunities for military children, and what you see here is the MASC language. And also what went out on listserv.
It's an interesting word choice, isn't it? Military children.
Yep.
I don't think I'd like to meet them.
Well.
Children in the military is okay, but military children?
It does refer in the policy, children, say, children of military families. I don't know, see any reason why we couldn't change that in the title.
Yeah, we can change the word. This is the one we pulled right off, so.
You like children of military families?
I think so.
Okay.
That's fair.
Military children.
Not here.
No.
So again, we did not receive any comments on this, and it also went out by listserv. Do you have a recommendation on, from the policy subcommittee, on if we want to go ahead with this, or if we want to bring it back for a second reading? Looking for, just for the two of you, do you have a, I mean, a hope for which?
My feeling was that this policy, like the one for foster children, is looking to just provide more support for children who are in a more transitional, can be geographically in a transitional place, so moving from town to town for whatever reason. And it seems, just to give a little bit more formality to what we are required to do to support that, I didn't personally see a downside. I think Dr. Kavanaugh felt comfortable with the content.
I did.
So I think, in my opinion, I think it's only a plus to approve it.
Yes, right.
But if you'd rather have more time for the community, we can wait, it's.
I don't feel like this is one that's going to generate, it did go out, and it is an existing MASC policy. I don't feel like it is one in, that is, going to generate the same level of community input as some, and it did go out as this. I also feel like we have a lot of policy to get through. If we can approve it here, I would rather do that than, rather than bring it back. If you're comfortable with that.
Yeah, I am, I am comfortable.
Yeah, I, in fact, I would rather, I mean, because we don't have it in existence right now, as long as there's no objections to anything in the wording, I think we should get it in our policy as quickly as possible. And I'll say the same thing for the next one, even though I'm jumping ahead.
Likewise.
All right, well, then I would seek a motion to approve policy JFABE, educational opportunities for children of military families.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so that so moves, and we move into the next one. Okay, and this one is JFABF.
This one does sort of the same thing as Amanda just explained. It, you know, provides opportunity for, this time, children in foster care. And again, it's in compliance with the Every Student Succeed Act.
Any more that anyone wants to add or question or anything? And I believe I heard a recommendation that we go ahead and approve this one as well.
Exactly, I think we need this one on the books.
I think, I would agree with that. So I would seek a motion to approve policy JFABF, educational opportunities for children in foster care.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And aye, and so that one also passes. All right, then, that brings us up to JFBB.
JFBB, so this is the policy on school choice. So the policy on school choice, again, is just a, a language change, and if you look down to number six, we have discovered that we need to add in the pregnancy or pregnancy-related condition, again, in that area. This one, you will note, where it says race, color, religion, national origin, sex, age, sexual orientation, gender identity appears twice, it's also, again, close to the end. So we would need to remove that second gender identity and keep ancestry, athletic performance, physical handicap, disability, pregnancy or pregnancy-related condition, academic performance, religious, sexual orientation, or proficiency in the English language. And I believe that all of those categories will be reflective also of the one that we just approved. So they are similar now. I mean, before, I think we had some things in one and other things in another, but not all of them in both policies. So this cleans that up a little bit.
And again, seems like no substantial changes that would prevent us from passing this unless anybody has any concerns.
This version I'm looking at says sexual orientation twice, did that get taken out?
Oh, so, oh, yes.
So, yes, so both.
That's good, so both, yes, sorry, good catch. So we have to remove gender identity and sexual orientation on their second mentioning.
Okay. So with the language cleaned up, I think we are ready to go ahead and seek a motion to approve policy JFBB, school choice.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes, and it's unanimous, and so moves. All right, that brings us to, we are going to hold off on the school committee meeting minutes procedure when Mina is with us, we'll put that on the agenda for the 20th. Would be my recommendation on that. All right, I just want to make sure we're not skipping anything in here. I don't want to say this too loud, but I do feel like we're moving along nicely, so I don't want to, just want to make sure we're not missing anything.
Yep.
I think we should always sit in a 90-degree room. It quieted our spirits indeed.
It quieted our spirits. Okay, so the.
Very motivating.
Just get through it. That brings us up to item N, and before I seek a motion on this, I would like to just highlight, I know that you guys are all aware of this, but for people who are not aware of this, on September 15th, we have at noon a ceremony where the school committee is going to ceremoniously turn over the control of the center school to the town, which we know actually in practical terms already has, but we have a very nice, large key that we are going to give the board of selectmen. And we have some former principals who are going to be on hand for that, so I would encourage people who would like to attend that, it is open to the public for tours between 11:00 and 2:00, and then the ceremony will be at noon, and former principal, Mr. Arger, will be there, also reading bedtime stories, although they won't be bedtime at noon, we hope. And Cubby will be there, and opportunities for photos with Cubby will be there.
Video presentation with the former students.
And the amazing video presentation that, thanks to HCAM, and then, and also, there are quite a few photos that have been brought through many decades. It runs, I think, an hour and a half, is that?
Roughly, yeah.
Yeah, so lots to see, and lots to enjoy, and lots to celebrate about many decades of use for the center school. It also is interesting, having been through the marathon school, going back to the center school, which I did, I think, two days ago, to see what we left behind and remember why we moved, but also remember the building served us very well for 90 years.
Along that line, I don't want to interrupt you, but also the center school reuse committee will be there, too.
And they have a table.
With information about what, the recommendations that are sort of in the pipeline to be made to the board of selectmen, so that's, that's not happening until, I can't remember one.
There's, there is a table, dedicated for that specifically in the gymnasium.
Good.
In that window somewhere.
All right, perfect.
Are you sure we shouldn't keep that key?
In actuality, it would spoil the cliffhanger.
Really, with all these students coming in, I'll take it to my house.
The key is this big, is about this big, and it will, it will be on display very likely, a prominent place either at the school or at the historical society. Little secret, it doesn't actually fit the door.
I'm not surprised.
There you go, there you go.
See, probably could. So at this time, I would like a, to seek a motion to officially decommission center school, as it is now a town-controlled property.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And it carries, and the center school is officially and technically and really actually under town control, so that has served us well, and we wish the town well in all of the efforts. I know that you're part of that group to figure out the next, next phase for the center school. So that brings, I'm going to go back so that I don't forget and start to close the meeting before we've gone back to the school committee chair report. And I am going to start by saying I have approved for payment the accounts payable warrants number 19-011, 19-012, 19-013, 19-014, 19-015, 19-016, and 19-017. All the warrants have been included in your packets. And then I have also approved for payment the payroll warrants S19004 and S19005, they also have been included in your packet. And I just also wanted to give a little update on the school committee office hours, and for those of you who also were there, please feel free to jump in with things you want to add, but it, it was, no, it was at the 20, it was 25th, I think, was the actual date, at the farmer's market, we held our first school committee office hours, and I wasn't sure what to expect, actually, and it really, it was a huge success. We had a lot of people who stopped by because they saw us and they saw our sign, and they had questions about what it is that we do. And they had some specific questions, that some of which are not school committee able to answer, there were, you know, question, a question about middle school math program, which we were able to direct to the right school personnel, and, you know, people, a lot of new families that were just curious about what we were doing, so I was. lot of new families that were just curious about what we were doing, so I was very happy to have that opportunity to engage with families and other people in the district. So that was a great thing, I don't know if you guys want to add?
No, it was great, but I should say that someone really wanted a later start time for the high school.
That does come up.
So the students could sleep a bit more.
Yeah, yes. So that was, and so the other thing I would like to talk about related to that is our next opportunity to do a School Committee Office Hours in September. We had talked back when we were at H-CAM earlier in May or June about doing, rotating afternoon, daytime and evening times, but I, the other possibility, I thought, just kind of like piggybacking off of what we did at the farmer's market, would be to potentially spend a little bit of time at the Family Day on September 15th, because then we have people that just happen upon us.
Great idea, let's do it.
Let's do it on the 15th, and perhaps we could be seated near CPAC because we have shared interests, and then I will circulate out a schedule, we can, because I'm sure people want to be there with their families as well, so we can take shifts.
That's great.
That's great. All right, so with that, we will move on to, I think we're moving into old business then, is that?
Yes, we are.
Yes, okay, so that's back, oh, so the, oh, I'm sorry, thank you, there was supposed to be a big kick that went my way, does anyone have any liaison reports that they would like to share?
I have two, but they're short. Okay, so, Elementary School Building Committee met, I didn't type the date in here, but I think it was two weeks ago. And just as a quick rundown, the flooring issues are being addressed in an ongoing fashion, but all of the classrooms are up and running, and everything looks fantastic, and so the small rooms will be addressed when school is not in session, so it won't disrupt anything. They're being great about how to work around the kids, so it's, that's all fine. And as the building is being lived in, all of the requests for miscellaneous things like filing cabinets and bulletin boards and things like that are being vetted through Mrs. DeBeau, and she's, she's, she's encouraging the faculty to sort of live there for a little while before they, they say they really need something, but, but she's also, you know, coming to the building committee if she feels like there's really something that, that needs to be either added or changed in the classrooms. And then the last thing, which I found fascinating, was that all of the chairs that were delivered were all delivered in the same size, however evidently, the first grade chairs were supposed to be a little taller than the pre-K and the K chairs. And WB Mason has taken a little bit longer than was originally communicated to send us the tall chairs, so there's, you know, as we're sort of closing out invoices and things like that, we are working with them to try to get the appropriate height chairs. Everybody's got a chair, it's fine, but some of the chairs are, are missing, so anyway, who would have thought chair height would come up in a, so anyway. And then Center School Reuse, I already mentioned, we will be presenting to the Board of Selectmen on the 25th, Recommendations for Reuse, and they have generally sort of, the ones that have floated to the top are the folks that went to the presentation at H-CAM back in, when was that, May, June?
June.
Yeah, June, somewhere, yeah.
That whole period blends together at this point.
So, so the community input has been great, and really, those, those five or six real needs have kind of floated to the top on a repeated basis, so, and there'll be information at the, the goodbye to Center School.
Looking forward to seeing the information on that.
And that's all I have.
I just have an update on the website, Subcommittee. Back in the summer, the School Committee authorized a Subcommittee to look at replacing the district website, and we are having our first meeting tomorrow, 10 o'clock. We have a committee, we have a mission, and we will be finalizing our organization tomorrow, talking about our requirements gathering process, which we anticipate will take most of the fall to really nail down what our new site needs to do, and we will be, people can look forward to outreach from us for involvement and feedback and input, so there'll be focus groups, there'll be discussion groups, all of which will be talked about tomorrow at our meeting, and I can update you more next time.
That's great.
It's happening, that's good.
That's great, so the, one, it's not exactly a liaison report, but the one thing I did want to circle back to was the newsletter that we had talked about a little bit, I've alluded to, because this is something I very much would like to get off the ground, I had asked Amanda for some technological assistance because I, that's not my forte, and my hope is that we can bring forward some more stuff at the next meeting, it just, this meeting with the number of things on it, I was afraid was going to end up being quite long, so I did not want to bring it here tonight. So with that, I think, unless anybody else has anything to add.
Just want to add that the first CPAC meeting is coming up on the 17th, and also on the 10th, there's a parent support group at the Public Library at 6:00 PM.
And am I, did I see the CPAC meeting is going to be at Marathon?
Yes, in an air-conditioned room.
I, I was thinking of that as was woman here.
In the cafeteria at Marathon, I'm surprised we haven't rescheduled our meetings into an air-conditioned environment, but maybe you think we talk too much.
It does move us along. So, on, on that note, I would like to turn us to the agreed-upon norms and operating protocols, and I, my sincere hope tonight is, because we have spent a great deal of time on this, that we are able to take the fruits of the labor we've already done and move relatively.
Expeditiously.
Yes, expeditiously through this.
So moved.
So, just so that it, we can take a look, I know that this has been circulated to us ahead of time, I don't know if people had any comments that they did not have the opportunity to share with Dr. Kavanaugh, or Dr. Kavanaugh, if you had anything you wanted to.
No, what you see in your packet is just what we had talked about last time, and we have taken what we did in July, and the August updates are all in red.
That looks great. All right, then, at this time, I would seek a motion, I'm going to talk a little faster just to make sure. I would like a motion to accept the group norms as they are, have been updated to.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And it so carries, and that brings us into Old Business, item B, the Superintendent's Goals. So we probably don't have that, but I will pull this up.
All right, so you do have my updated copy in your packets, and that is also under Old Business, and so you can see that there are five goals there, and I should probably apologize because I should have maybe better grounded this last time we were together. So while the superintendent writes goals for evaluation, there is also an educator evaluation rubric specifically designed for superintendents in Massachusetts, so that's what I have put up there on that screen so that you can just sort of see it, and it is broken into standards, indicators, and elements, so the four standards are instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. When you see these bolded ones, ooh, I don't know why it's doing that, that say things like instruction indicator, curriculum indicator, those are, the indicators and below those are the elements. So all of those are also part of how a superintendent is evaluated in Massachusetts. So the goals that I have before you, there are five of them, the first is about establishing our new strategic plan. The second one is professional practice as well as district improvement, and that one is really about building the repertoires of our administrators, faculty, staff, in terms of just cultural sensitivity and diversity. It's designed really to help our kids to have greater psychological and social safety in our schools, and I think in some ways, it's very nicely in sync with all the social, emotional learning goals that we see in the school improvement plans district-wide. The third is a professional practice goal, and that goes along with the NISIP program, New Superintendent Induction Program, in which I am enrolled, and I think that my mentor will be coming to some of our School Committee meetings to observe.
Oh, fabulous.
So, yes, we'll get to meet him. The fourth goal is to enhance reading and writing instruction at the high school for special educators and special education students. In 2019, for the very first time, the high school kids will not be taking the legacy MCAS, but they will be taking the new MCAS test as grades, you know, three to eight have historically been doing for some time now. And in that test, there's a narrative task, a literary analysis task, and a research simulation task, and our concern is that we really want the students who struggle with writing at the high school level to be well-prepared for this, so even though it says that it will be for special educators, paraprofessionals will be there, and the grade nine and grade 10 English faculty will also be there, and so we have several days planned during the school year for this professional development, and there will be sort of intermittent work, looking at student work, protocols, creating portfolios, and so, that's number four. And then the fifth one is about the budget, and the budget for me is a huge ordeal based on those numbers that we saw tonight, and things like busing and special education and physical plants and all of that, I think we really need to think hard about that as we enter into this season. So I do have some stress on the planning board, and maybe we will even need to think about throwing out an RFP to have a professional firm work with us to, to help us think about what enrollment and some of our, our learning needs will be in the next several years.
I think that would be shrewd, as our numbers continue to explode.
Explode is the right word.
I mean, I do know that there are over 400 additional, you know, housing units to be constructed, and those are the ones that have been approved, so.
We have to think hard.
I know. I drove through Legacy North yesterday, and I was counting the houses that had been built and populating them with three kids each, and I thought, you know, we, we really have to prepare for this.
Growth is an exciting thing to look at in many aspects, but the budget we have to be prepared for, we have to be prepared for them when they get here.
That's right, that's right.
All right, so if there are no other comments or questions on the goals.
They're very well-written, yeah.
They're great, thank you.
Are looking for a motion from us?
Yes, to approve these goals for the 18, 19 school year.
So I'm looking for that motion, as she said.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Yes.
And so that is approved, thank you very much for all of your.
Thank you.
Thoughtfulness on those. So that brings us now into our second opportunity for public comment. We are looking, like our popularity has waned for the second opportunity, so that will move us into items by consensus.
All right, and as the superintendent, I recommend that the School Committee vote to approve the following items by consensus.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes, and it's unanimous, and so carries, and at this point, I would seek a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? And we are adjourned, our next meeting is September 20th, 2018 is actually what it should say, at 7:00 PM. It's a regular meeting, but it will take place at H-CAM Studios because of other things going on with different parent nights here.
No less than, no more than 72.5.
We're going to keep showing up there, so, thank you all, and have a good night.
Thank you.